George, you've got to remind me about my order. Okay, we're going to go into our adjourn meeting. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Highland Park Planet on December 4th, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on December 4th, 2019, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones and assistive listening devices George, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovair?
Here.
And I'm here.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the following agenda items, number four through 12?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Is there any public comment? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Our next scheduled meeting is going to be January 21st, and we will now adjourn to our -- to take a break before our reorg meeting. Thank you.
(Inaudible).
No. Okay. We're going right into our agenda for this evening. So I don't have to do the public?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. Clerk, could you please report on the certification of election and qualifications of Mayor-Elect Brill Mittler and Councilpersons-Elect Hale and George?
Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to report that the Middle Sixth County Board of Elections has certified the election of Gail Brill Mittler as Mayor and Matthew Hale and Philip George as members of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park. Once they have subscribed to their oath of office and allegiance, they are qualified to assume their duly elected positions on the governing body.
And now we will go right into the oath of office and allegiance administered to me.
Do we have an oath as to it?
Mm-hmm. We have all virgins.
Senator Deigman, thank you for joining us.
It is an honor, and I say it everywhere I go, now more than ever, when I come to Highland Park, I get reassured about what our country is all about. This is the most inclusive, welcoming community that I have ever seen, and God bless you, and God bless you, Mayor, and the Council for carrying on that tradition. I?
I. Gail Brill Mittler?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly?
And justly?
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties?
Of the office of Mayor?
Of the office of Mayor?
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people? Under the authority of the people? So help me God.
Thank you.
I?
I.
Matthew Hale? Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly?
And justly?
Perform all the duties?
Perform all of the duties?
Of the office of councilperson?
Of the office of councilperson?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And now the oath of allegiance administered to Council President-elect by Senator Deigman.
I've known this guy for a few years. I guess I should admit, I've known him since birth. Does everybody know that his dad was Mayor of South Plainfield? Hell, yeah. I literally have known him. He had a battle with a certain person's father in his first birth, knocking on doors. I?
I, Philip George?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly?
And justly?
Perform all the duties of the office of councilperson?
Perform all of the duties of the office of councilperson?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I am now calling this meeting to order. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Acts. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Highland Park Planet on December 4th, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on December 4th, 2019, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphone and assistive listening devices are available. Senator Deigman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask Rabbi Philip Basely to come up and do the invocation for the evening.
I want to begin by congratulating the mayor and all the candidates who were elected and are being sworn in today. Congratulations. May you and all of your peers serve with justice and passion as the foundation of your service. I also want to thank the mayor for inviting me to speak this evening and to address all of you tonight. I agree with the senator and his comments about how special and wonderful our community is, and one of the things that I love about our borough is that we really are a microcosm for the whole country, and we represent a diverse group of individuals, both in body and in thought, in stature and in faith. And even though we see this community as being a little piece of paradise, we should not think that we are immune from what's happening in the world around us. There's a journalist named Bill Bishop who wrote a book called The Big Sword, and one of the things that he spoke about was how more and more nowadays we are circling ourselves off into little microcosms of homogeneous thoughts, that we only really talk to one another who agree with us. It is so easy nowadays for us to change the channel or to friend the person on Facebook or to stop talking to the person who has a different opinion than we do. And we're seeing now in our country as a whole how that has the ability to poison us, and poison the soul of our nation and of our community too, that once we start believing that those people over there who are thinking that are wrong, then we start thinking other things about them as well. Rabbi Abraham Isaac Cook, who was the first chief rabbi of Israel, wrote extensively on the thoughts of pluralism and warns what happens when we stop acknowledging that there are other valid points of view. He wrote that "all defects of the world, the material and the spiritual, all derive from the fact that every individual sees only the one aspect of existence that pleases him or her, and all other aspects then are becoming comprehended by him seem to be deserving a purging of the world, and the thought leaves its imprint on individuals and groups, on generations and epochs, that whatever is outside one's own is destructive and disturbing, and the result is only a multiplication of conflict." I think we're very much seeing that around us, that we no longer have the ability to talk with one another with issues that we disagree on, rather we shout and we yell and we threaten. And we, as a community, that represent what we see to be a little bit of paradise here in New Jersey, we need to be the emulation and the embodiment of the resistance of That's how we move away from it. We need to acknowledge that there are other points of view and that somebody else might be right and we might be wrong and vice versa. But we also need to take a stand as well. While there's much that I disagree with Rob Cook on, I also agree with him on his sense of tokahah and refu, that hate speech and xenophobia are on the rise, and that when we see the speech or a thought or an idea that is taking away the legitimacy of another human being, that objectifies them, that requires their extermination, then we as a community must rise up and say that hate has no home, and that will not be accepted and tolerated. We need to make a stand for what is right so that we all can enjoy the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness here in this town. But we also need to acknowledge that there's a lot of room in between here and there, and that we need to have a dialogue and a conversation about that, that we can be the town that we aim to be, that we dream to be, by engaging with one another. And if we do that, and if we come together, and if we can solve problems that way, then what a bit of paradise we can be and how we can show to the rest of New Jersey and this country what that paradise could look like, because look at this, we are emulating what it means to come together with the diverse thought and diverse population that we have. So for my invocation blessing, my prayer is not just for our leaders but for all of us, not just our town's leadership. May you all, may all of us, be blessed with the courage and strength to come together, the humanity to say I might not be right, and the courage to ask for help in understanding other thoughts and points of view. May our town of Highland Park always be a shelter of respect and courtesy, a place where hate shall have no home, and all shall live with peace in our hearts and amicability towards one another. May our town always be a place that fulfills the words of Leviticus, that we hold forever be a town that proclaims liberty and freedom throughout the land. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hale?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovair?
Here.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight as the mayor and Borough Council reorganize at this meeting. It is my privilege to offer the annual State of the Borough address, and the State of the Borough of Highland Park, as seen in some vital areas, is very strong. We continue to attract new residents, graduate students, young professionals, new families, middle-aged professionals, retirees, and others. We continue to attract a remarkable contingent of active and hard-working volunteers who serve on our many boards, committees, and commissions. We continue to attract New Jersey state grants for essential services and the support of our statewide elected officials, many of whom are here tonight, and they do help us in our efforts to improve our town. We continue to attract participants from across the country to our fun-filled street fairs, our Friday afternoon farmer's market, autumn in the park, holiday festivals, and other activities, many so ably organized by our Main Street Highland Park organization. And we continue to attract attention, interest, and yes, some spirited debate as we work to tackle the pressing issues of this historical moment, from environmental activism to implicit bias and hate in all forms, from sustainability to affordable housing, and much more. It is an exciting time to be a person who lives in Highland Park. I'm pleased to share the progress of the governing body in three essential areas of our civic life, increasing transparency and accessibility to government, accentuating our focus on community building, and exercising smart fiscal management. Transparency has been one of the five overarching goals of the mayor and council for a few years now. In 2019, we made important strides to take this goal to an entirely new level. We changed the physical location of the mayor and council's agenda and work session meetings. This made the sessions that occur before and after the regular council meetings more accessible to residents and easier for them to sit in on and watch us deliberate. But if you can't make it to a meeting, our Borough Administrator created a new email publication called Take Five, which offers a succinct summary of each mayor and council meeting and is usually sent out within two days of the meeting. Of course, there's always HPTV's Channel 15 presentation of the meetings, too. We've also rolled out a new borough website and instituted monthly mayor's open office hours, a monthly lunchtime what's new and what's news in the borough, where we address the entire Highland Park community at the Community Center, and twice yearly, I have my Ask the Mayor Anything Open Public Forum. This is in addition to the evening open public forums that we've held on the Borough Master Plan, Police Leadership, the Bring Your Own Bag ordinance, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, the possible relocation of a private girls' school on Cleveland Avenue, and more. It is now easier than it has ever been for residents to find time to discuss their concerns in person with their local elected officials. We are proud of our efforts to make the town government more transparent and your borough leaders more accessible, and we intend to keep working on it. We've also expanded our efforts to build a more welcoming, fair, and compassionate community which embraces all its residents. Our teen center, Zone Six, energetically led by Ashton Burrell, has become a fixture in town in the spring celebrated its first graduating class. I'm proud to note that most of the Zone Six graduates have gone on to post-high school or two- or four-year colleges or to military service. Our homegrown charity, HP Gives a Hoot, has mobilized dozens of residents to contribute to activities that offer nutritious meals to borough youth and families who might not otherwise obtain them. And HP Gives a Hoot has expanded its repertoire of services, now providing bags of groceries on a weekly basis through the teen center to families who can use them. This, of course, supplements the amazing efforts of the volunteers run -- who run our community food pantry and their growing client base. Our Park Partners Program continues to support proposals by residents to enhance life in the borough. In 2019, the program funded activities to help fight hunger, spread environmentally conscious artwork, enable Chinese lion dance events, and more. The Park Partners Program is accepting proposals for 2020 grants, and the proposals are due this Friday at 1:00 p.m. I can't wait to see what our residents have dreamt up for us this time. We've also begun having important conversations about sensitive issues in town which impact specific communities. We've looked closely at implicit bias, both through the work of the Equity and Human Relations Commissions and in a three-hour-long workshop for community leaders in November facilitated by the American Conference on Diversity. We've also held an open public forum, a candlelight vigil, and numerous small group discussions with local leadership to advance the borough's efforts to fight the frightening rise of antisemitism. These efforts build on prior advances and continuing activities, including the work of our Immigrant and Refugee Commission to build a more embracing and welcoming town. And of course, for a community to be truly welcoming, the safety of all residents is paramount. To that end, this year, the Highland Park Police Department saw major changes that will enhance safety and community involvement from the department. We welcomed new police leadership in Chief Rick Abrams, who is here tonight, and Captain Joe Curbelo. Under their leadership, we've already seen a new emphasis on data collection and analysis, holding regular open public meetings, and more face-to-face outreach. Community building has been a pillar of our work in 2019, and we will continue to stay focused on it in 2020. At the same time, we've kept our eyes on the bottom line, and the borough has managed and exercised smart fiscal management. We've raised nearly $1 million in grant funding from the state and the county for essential services, infrastructure work, improvements of our shared spaces, and other initiatives. We've encouraged new real estate developments in and around our downtown, setting the stage to bring in new revenue and welcome new residents and businesses. And through the final settlement of our long-awaited, newly -- nearly two-decades-long affordable housing litigation, we put an end to at least $500,000 of cumulative legal fees. We've invested in our infrastructure by repaving a few of our most-traveled roads, as well as repaving two municipal parking lots and the library's parking lot. Plus, PSENG's replacement of antiquated gas lines throughout town will result in additional newly paved roads provided by the utility. And we've created a new water and sewer management plan that will enable us to contend with increased state mandates for water quality and utility management. And speaking of PSENG, the new solar field went fully operational on the south side of town, and it will bring in new revenue through rental charges, besides providing needed research on solar energy for the entire state. Proper planning for our future is key to municipal and financial management. In the past year, with the help of our borough planners, Jim Constantine and Chris Ksenza, and members of our special master plan subcommittee, we finalized a thorough review of our master plan to include concepts for six new zones and improvements to zoning requirements for residential homes. Our planners were also instrumental in the ongoing activities for new downtown development with several locations in play. There is a lot more the governing body has done to exercise responsible and forward-thinking stewardship of our borough. I've offered a summary of highlights, yet I urge you to subscribe to the Take Five email, download the Recycle Coach app for up-to-date garbage and recycling information, and attend our council meetings. Participate in an open forum, friend us on Facebook, visit our new website, and/or get involved as volunteers to learn more. It's been a busy year, and I would like you to see all we managed to get done. It's been quite a lot. It is vital as well that we all appreciate the exceptional dedication and hard work of our council members. Each of them dedicates countless hours and attends many meetings each month to support the work of our different borough departments, boards, committees, and commissions. In the interest of brevity, I want to thank each of them for one or two signature achievements in 2019. But please, trust me when I tell you, these council members and these shout-outs are only -- they only scratch the surface of what our council members have done throughout the year. So, Stephanie Kim Cho Han, thank you for your efforts to help implement innovative new AARP programming at the Highland Park Community Center, and thank you for your support of the Arts Commission, which has secured a great deal of county grant funding for the public arts initiatives throughout town. Susan Wilkowitz, thank you for your work, which led Susan Wilkowitz, thank you for your work, which led to the borough receiving $220,000 in new New Jersey State DOT funding for bicycle and pedestrian improvements to our borough infrastructure. And thank you for your efforts with our Main Street organization, which received an improvement grant from the New Jersey State Department of Community Affairs to build and install a beautiful new pavilion in our town. The pavilion has already been used for events and will be a great addition to our farmer's market. Thank you. Elsie Foster Dublin, thank you for your efforts to help interview, assess, and select the new leaders of our police department. This was a challenging process, in that all the candidates brought impressive credentials and creative ideas to the table. Your experience and wise counsel in this process was absolutely vital. And thank you for your ongoing work to identify and implement improvements to all our first responder organizations. Thank you. Matthew Hale, thank you for your many, many efforts and countless hours of consultation on the borough's initiatives on both implicit bias and fighting antisemitism. Neither are simple issues, and both attract passionate feelings and animated discussion. You've shown a remarkable drive, focus, and commitment to this work, and thank you for making the match between the Universal Access Committee and the Highland Park Community Food Pantry in the early fall to arrange for the purchase of over 100 durable shopping carts for people who use the food pantry. Thank you. Josh Fine, thank you for your work to move the needle on shared services agreements, a sensible and sound cost-cutting strategy, by arranging and attending meetings with New Jersey State's Two Shared -- this is a tongue twister -- Two Shared Service Zars, and with our counterparts in Metuchen, East Brunswick, and Piscataway. And thank you for presenting a resolution approved unanimously by the council to remove religious exemptions for immunizations for private and public school students. Thank you. And Phil George, our council president, thank you for your sound counsel as we interviewed and appointed a new leader for the Department of Public Works, and for your continued work with that department, especially the many hours revamping our water sewer plans. And thank you for your continued efforts to help shape the agenda of the council so it is fully informed, collaborative, progressive, and fiscally prudent. You've been an excellent partner in moving the borough forward. Thank you. And of course, thank you, everyone who came out tonight and who volunteered and who worked day in and day out for the benefit of the citizens of Highland Park. May 2020 be a year of positive growth and community harmony for us all. I now have the pleasure of introducing the newly sworn-in council members. And Council President Phil George. All right. May I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to adopt the rules of order for 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
I thought we were removing--
You're gonna -- you have to have rules of order. You're gonna amend them.
Okay. So, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution for the mission statement for the borough of Highland Park?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to establish the 2020 Standing Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a nomination for president of the council for 2020?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilperson Phil George.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Did we get a second?
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion that nominations will be closed, and 2020 council president has been elected and acclaimed by acclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. May I have -- oh, I delivered that. Okay.
A little out of order.
Yeah. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda items number 15 through 26?
So moved.
Roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
Now, because I'm going to lose my voice at any moment, I'm going to ask Council President Phil George to run through the consent items, starting at 27. Do you want this copy?
There's a larger type font, so I'll use this one. The mayor appoints the following to serve as the professionals for 2020: Borough Attorney Edward Schmier, Tax Appeal Attorney Martin Allen, Labor Attorney Arthur Tabalt, Borough Prosecutor Robert Jocenovich, Public Defender Roselli and Roselli, Bond Counsel Willens, Golden &amp; Spitzer, Borough Engineer David Samuel, Borough Auditor Gerald Stankiewicz, Borough Planner James Constantine, Special COA Attorney Jeff Serenian, Special Planner Philip Caton, Special Redevelopment Counsel Joe Baumann, and Risk Manager David Balkin. Motion to confirm?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who's roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
The mayor appoints the following with council consent: Deputy Court Administrator Linda Simons, Deputy Borough Clerk Jennifer Santiago, ADA Coordinator Scott Brescher, Library Board of Trustees Council Rep Philip George, Qualified Purchasing Agent Gregory Ferrenbach. Is there a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
The mayor makes the following appointments: Arts Commission Pandora Scooter, Board of Health Laurel Kornfeld, Jess Crossen, and Dan Stern Cardinal as alternate one; CDBG Advisory Committee Susan Wilkowitz, Edward Prince, Sheila Highsmith, Deborah Morgan; Commission for Universal Access Diane Feldman and Tara Canavera; Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs as table; Community Emergency Response Team Joanna Joseph, Alisa Kaplan, Pamela Plastop, Brian Duches, Roberto Munies, Shari Larson, Paul Schaaf, Susan Winter, David Larson, Bruce Nadler, Anne Cheryl White, Nancy Wolf, Rodolfo Giuliano; For the Community Food Pantry Committee Janice Ballou, Monica Day, Andrea Greenberg Horowitz, Susan Powell, Laurel Kornfeld, Lynn Platt, Susan McKinnon, Deborah Convery, Bruce Bush, Evelyn Sadei, Nancy Lord, Craig Ambroch, Miriam Lefkowitz as an alternate, and Kathy Lombardi, alternate. For the Council on Aging Anlock, Leah Guzman, Leela Frost, Ramona Rosas; For the Emergency Management Council Thomas Hamel, Linda Hofela, Terry Hovier, Michael Wiskorikowicz, Scott Brescher, and Nancy Wolf; For the Employee Safety Committee Leanne Crosley Richardson, Rick Abrams, Michael Wiskorikowicz, Robert Cahill, Renee George, Jay Litman, Brian O'Mara, Kim McGraw, Nicole Huff; For the Ethics Board Fred Cole and Paul Ambos; For the Historical Commission Michelle Raciopi, Anna Parrott, Tom Glynn, Jeremy Gross, John Beatham, Bernice Bernstein, Donald Beatham; For H.P. Gives a Hoot Monica Jackson, Michael Buckman, Joyce Orenstein, Eva Love, Evelyn Sadei, Jimmy Polos, Marilyn Price, our Prouse; The Library Board of Trustees Roberta Cressel; The Mayor's Wellness Campaign Committee Dr. Cliff Lacy, David Seigman, Justin Futterman, Patrolman Gattano Palumbo, Donald Core, Michelle Kornblum, and Dr. Mark Shiner; For the Municipal Alliance Patrolman Brian O'Mara, Elizabeth Asamo, Austin Moriel, Lara Arp, Ashton Burrell, Leanne Crosley Richardson, the Reverend Seth Caperdale, Irene Marx, Wendy Yang, and Kimberly McGraw; The Public Information Commission Laurel Kornfeld, Mason Resnick, Abby Stern Cardinal, and Shalee Saul; Recreation Advisory Committee Mickey Landis, Debbie Ayer, Kenneth Haskins, Kathy Pace, Jay Weinberg, Tara Canavera, Nick Cambitzis, Sean Harrison, Alexandria Alexander, Udi Davis, Alex Duncan; For the Rehabilitation and Redevelopment Screening Committee Wolfram Hofer, Judy Richman, Robert Fector, Randy Solomon, Kim Hammond, Rebecca Hirsch, and James Nichols; For the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee Colleen McKay-Worten, Ben Arringer, Tracy Maiden, Andy Lon; For the Shade Tree Advisory Committee Roseanne Baruch, Karen Swain, Eileen Coffey, Roseanne Calla, Carol Avisgard, Belinda Beatham, Mary Denver, Anne Marie Allard, Christine Best, Joshua Best, Marian Sakrowitz, and Paul Sowers; For Sustainable Highland Park Tina Weisshaus, Alan Williams, Haggett Mono, Irene Regner, Chen Marx, Wendy Rosen, Paul Sowers, Olivia Park, and Joyce Moe. Is there a motion to confirm the nominations for those committees?
The ones he didn't read are not being--
Oh, that being done. Oh, okay.
I know what you were gonna say.
Okay.
You're good.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay. Are you back?
I'm back.
Just a second.
Okay. I think I can handle these few.
Especially the adjournment part.
I am appointing the following: To the Environmental Commission: Michael Rosenberg, Laurel Kornfeld, and Steve Barnes; To the Planning Board: Scott Brescher; The Planning Board Mayor's Designee: Patrick Millay; Library Board of Trustees Mayor's Alternate: Ron Wong. Thank you. May I have--
Any questions?
No.
No confirmation.
Okay.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to appoint Council Representative to Planning Board Matthew Hale?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution designating Council Representative to Middlesex County CDBG Committee Susan Wilkowitz?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Abstain.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to adopt 2020 municipal water and sewer temporary budgets?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
All right. Is there any public discussion? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Herb Rhodes. I live in Adelaide Gardens. Tonight, I would like to take a few moments for everyone's time, to everyone in attendance here, and to everyone watching TV. I have listened to many speakers come up here tonight, and I respect your comments, and I respect your opinions, and I want everyone to respect my opinions also. Tonight, I would like to take a few moments to bring out something that's very important that's bothered me very much. I have listened to everyone here, but I have not heard anyone give support to my brothers and my sisters, who I fought and served with, and are serving you and your families, tonight in this emergency that we have, protecting your freedom. To my brothers and my sisters, I would like to have more support from every council member, including you, Mayor, to our Gold Star Mothers. May I go for a moment on this? Our Gold Star Mothers and Wives, my brothers and sisters, who have made the supreme sacrifice for everyone here, and I would like to have more support for our Gold Star Mothers. I am well aware of the sacrifice that our families have made. My family has made the supreme sacrifice also. And Mayor, I want more support for our Gold Star Mothers and Wives, which I have not heard anyone. I am well aware of the officer that just got installed. I am not criticizing you people, but I would like to have more support. Our brothers and sisters, my brothers and my sisters, are on the verge of a very big military showdown. I want everyone to give our support to our troops. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.-- Thank you, Mr. Glass. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion to adjourn. Before you do that, Mayor, I just want to say a quick prayer, and keep in mind the people in Puerto Rico that got hit by the earthquake, and that whatever we can do to help our brothers and sisters in Puerto Rico, we should really reach out to them, boy, they have some efforts going there, so we can join in and provide resources. Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.